We have to have a technical guy.
I hate the FBI.
It's better than smacking the side of the box.
It's not that I haven't tried these before.
Oh, yeah.
It's good.
That's it.
We have been reading.
We should be here this time.
Well, no, it's for last year.
They always pick the first one they see.
That's right.
They know.
The more emergency hours we have, the more we get.
My son's using some frozen on the couch. He'd eat nuts.
I've got.
It's still on.
Oh, no, good lord.
It's ready. Ready, Fred.
Hi, how are you?
We should be here this time.
Well, no, it's for last year.
They always pick the first one they see.
That's it.
They always pick the first one they see.
That's it.
That's it.
We have been reading.
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 We should be here this time.
Well, no, it's for last year.
We go at this point.
Well, I didn't say.
I mean, please, my son loves me.
I used to work.
I used to work.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
They always pick the first one they see.
That's right. You know.
They know.
The more emergency hours we have, the more we get.
Yes.
My son's using some frozen on the couch. He'd eat nuts.
I've got.
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 So, please, that's here, though, John.
How's your rest?
That's all that we're talking about.
That's all that we're talking about.
Unless it won't.
I know it's necessary.
It stops the reservation as described.
First thing I watch my ground.
I know.
We sell rooms.
Yeah.
Especially if you have one in your house.
You can't.
You got to take care of the colors.
You got to stress the color.
Like, you want to.
You got to take care of the color.
Then there's the light.
You got to take care of the color.
Then there's the light.
You got to take care of the color.
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 That's all that we're talking about.
This is what I'm saying.
Unless it won't.
I know it's necessary.
It stops the reservation as described.
Right.
Same.
Yeah.
We see how many.
We sell rooms.
Yeah.
Something is with my son.
Good.
Especially if you have one in your house.
Good.
Especially if you have one in your house.
Good.
Especially if you have one in your house.
Good.
Especially if you have one in your house.
Good.
Especially if you have one in your house.
Good.
Especially if you have one in your house.
Good.
Especially if you have one in your house.
Good.
Especially if you have one in your house.
Good.
Especially if you have one in your house.
Good.
You got to take care of the color.
Yeah.
Then there's the light.
Good.
You got to take care of the color.
Good.
You got to take care of the color.
Good.
You got to take care of the color.
Good.
You got to take care of the color.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's what the mayor and he.
But there's.
Eighteen.
Five.
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 Top.
Yeah.
Top.
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 I could call this meeting the Leger Town Council to order please join the Leger meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the resolve for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the call? Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Here.
Mr. France? Mr. Gobordy? Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McBratt?
Here.
Mr. Saum?
Here.
Second here, Mr. Babson? Are there any residents or property owners that wish to speak before the council? Hearing none, we will move on to committee commission and board reports. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask the chairman and Lieutenant Finkelstein and Sergeant Kermit to join me here. We have a few introductions to make and I'll ask Lieutenant if he would introduce our unit's position.
Let's introduce our newest officer to Leger Police Department, Officer Gary Butters. Gary's a Galesford resident and a recent retired State Woods.
Hey, and it's good to have him on board. Gary is a, Officer Butters, I'm sorry, Officer Butters is a lifelong Leger resident. It's raised his family here and we're fortunate that he's chosen to join us after leaving a great career with the State Police. So it's great to have you on board. That's good. And as some come and some go, we have a retirement. So, Lieutenant?
Tonight we're celebrating the retirement of K-9 Ringo, who was assigned to Officer Dan Gagnon as a K-9 for the past eight years for the Leger Police Department. Effective July 1st, Ringo is now enjoying his retirement. He's here at Gagnon's home.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a presentation I'd like to make here. Certificate of Appreciation, known the mayor of the town of Leger decrees the following. In recognition of faithful service to the town of Leger, this certification of appreciation is hereby awarded to Officer Dan Gagnon and Patrol K-9 Ringo. On occasion of Patrol K-9 Ringo's retirement from the Leger Police Department, this certificate is awarded as a testimonial of loyal and dedicated service over the past eight years. Your K-9 team involvement in several successful searches for suspects as well as numerous drug-related fines is a testament to your abilities as a working dog team. Your eight years of providing demonstrations for various community organizations and schools was extremely instrumental in making the Leger Police Department, community policing program, the success that it has enjoyed. Being the first runner-up in 2010 for the prestigious CPWBA Watson Memorial Award, a test to respect the team has in the dog handlers community. Given this 23rd day of July 2014, John A. Rauli, the mayor. As many of you have, and we all have, attended some demonstrations, we all know, and I have to tell you, I've always been fascinated by that, the fact that, Officer, if you can join us. We, I just find it mind-blowing that goes through all of these demonstrations and all of these things that's hard to try to do, and then we say, okay, that's it, and the kids come out of the stands and just absolutely swarm Ringo and just, you know, absolutely amazing training. So, again, we stress our appreciation for all that you've done over these past eight years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would just like to add that John is, the mayor has given out many certificates. He's never invited me to come up here. It just seems odd that I got put between you and the car.
You know, okay.
I probably have to say.
Okay, and before I get, I'm sorry, Officer Butters. You have Mike say something.
I'm just glad to be accepted at the Bartle Leger and I'll do my best. The phone went up and down for the last forty-five years.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Real quick, I have to thank a few people. Mike Finkelstein for all the support over the years, and of course, Mike Ravino. I mean, when I first started years ago, if, I never seen Mike and Max work together, I probably never would have got a dog to begin with. So, Mike Ravino deserves a huge round of applause, so. And Billy Hocken's not here tonight, but who works with us also, he was instrumental in everything I ever did with the dog, so, thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, well, we'll move on to elderly PCA, wastewater sewer study report from Chairman Lynch, and then if Mr. Euchrom shows up, we'll go back to that. But we'll start with Mr. Lynch, thank you for being here.
I'll make this very quick. We are completing a state-acquired waste water facility management plan based to, we do have a public hearing next week and a meeting Tuesday. The public will be just being invited to make comments on the plan. And then we have about, what's it, thirty days to incorporate those comments and then finalize the plan, so around August 14th. Yeah, we'll be close to, close to that, so. I'm here, I guess I have to confess, I did read this whole thing. And I, I'm not expecting anybody to read this, but it's pretty, pretty sensible. It talks about this town in terms of the kind of soils we have, the kind of brokers we might have, and some of the challenges for its waste management. There's also a report on the need to upgrade our present facility. It is about a million dollars to do that. And I have, it's actually pretty impressive that the state of that facility is doing the job it's doing today. I mean, the water that's coming out of that facility, I'd have no hesitation drinking, that's how pure that water is coming out, and yet, considering the state of the equipment, it's pretty impressive how the few divisions keep that twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, without a lot of issues. I can answer any questions you might have on this, and obviously you'll have an opportunity through the public hearing and other things that we'll be talking about, so, yes.
Hey, just really quick, the upgrade that we're gonna have to do at some point, is that gonna maintain capacity or will that increase capacity?
No, actually, will not. It, the capacity right now, there's a question, right now, the capacity's around .26 million gallons per day. It runs about .13, so there is some capacity. There, you know, there is that, yes, there is that possibility of looking at maybe doing something with that in terms of, we have some prior commitments, but I don't know if that's short-term thinking. I mean, the state is, is ambivalent about what we're doing, even though it's very pure water and it actually disappears. It goes into the, into a sand pit, you can't find it. It's, but the state is at best ambivalent about that process, so the question would be, if we ever went back to the state to fund it to increase it, we might run to, we'd have some resistance. But I think we could overcome, but, but I, but yeah, there's gonna be some friction, you know, there's something, we really don't like that kind of process, that you're never seeing going to, into a river or stream, and it's.
Real quick, I mean, I only read through the executive summary myself, I didn't go through the other 214 pages. But the executive summary pretty much made a comment about the existing plant is that with the high water table there now and the limitation of how much water can be dumped into the stream by the state, really, that limits any expansion of that existing facility in any way, shape.
Right, and remember, we're only about half, we run, as I said, about 130,000 gallons per day, and we, so we, there is some, the biggest problem is in spring, when the groundwater comes up. And then we do have some intrusion from outside, although we try, they're very vigilant about finding out who's dumping their drain water, there's some pumps into this system that does ruin the capacity. Yes. I, I think it would be, it'd be short-term, I mean, I think it would save some problem that you're having right now with, let's say, the police station. But, you know, how far can you build out, Lieutenant, on that system, it's very questionable, yes.
Any other council comments? Mr. Saum?
Mr. Chairman, could you speak just briefly about the cost recommendations in the, in the report and the areas that it covers? And, and the long-term view, you know, how, how far out are we looking, what are the areas that looked at, and what are, what are the costs beyond the, the current system?
Okay, so, we're looking at twenty, this is a twenty-year, 2015, 2035. The recommendations are kind of, if you, it does break it down, so there's some sectional things, for example, Gales Ferry is not very far from the Groton Sewer pipeline. Highway is, it's really just a little bit hill. So, there is a recommendation, a possibility of tying Gales Ferry into that system. There's a cost associated on the table, I think it's in the 25 million range to do that. Now, the one thing that doesn't address in terms of cost is the, because it's fairly recent, it's the Norwich expansion. And so there's a possibility of going north from Leger Center to Norwich, to the fresh line, by Norwich Hospital, so that hasn't been, that really hasn't cost it, I don't know. They went the other way, they went into Groton Town, that was another thirty million, twenty-nine million dollars. So, the total cost of doing at Elgin Heights, all these areas, would be about ninety million. And that's not the whole town, that's actually three major areas, so.
So, so the reason I asked you to share that is because there was some recent commentary on the Facebook forum, about a half-million-dollar grant the town got to improve the appearance of 217 to the center of town. And suggestion was made that we could use that money for sewers, so I just want to put in perspective for the residents, you know, a half-million dollars doesn't go very far when you're talking tens of twenties and thirties and ninety million dollars if you look at the whole.
Look at a foot, two hundred dollars a foot. Two hundred dollars a foot, maybe two miles, be two miles away from the high school, for example, there, you can just do the math, it's not.
You know, my matchbook math is a million dollars a mile.
Yeah, so a million dollars a mile for sewer where water is something less.
It's about five hundred thousand.
And then streetscapes are way less. Just to put the cost in perspective, thank you. I encourage residents to attend next week, next Tuesday.
Yes, all this information's online.
Yes, it's all online.
The easiest path is IQM2 from tonight's meeting. If you can't do that, IQM2 for the public hearing next Tuesday, and if you can't do that, call me and I'll help you.
Be patient when the document loads.
Yes, that's right.
It's a lot. It's an internet connection.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, any other committee commissioner board reports? Now, let's move on to comments of town councillors. Anybody starting to feel that?
So, yesterday, most of the council, most of the councils that attended, we had the presenting ceremony for the governor, for the half-million dollar grant for the landscaping in Leger Center, to continue on with the work that the Leger Town Senator Committee has done with the wall and from the landscaping and the town green. So, much appreciated to the state, to the governor for the award, much thanks to Senator Kathy Austin and Jim Bowles, our representative, for the support that they gave to get that grant to the town. But one thing I noted while I was standing out there, listening to the governor and the mayor, is I'm looking across the street at Leger Center School. We know, all know that the Board of Education has made the decision that the expansion of the school is gonna be talked out of head. So, from an economic development standpoint, looking at what we want to go do with that, we all know the outcome of trying to sell one school building. So, I would like to put onto the land use agenda for the start of discussion of what we want to do with that building. Tear it down, sell it, or whatever, so that we can pursue that through either EDC or the permanent municipal.
Consider that on your agenda.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? Yes?
As you know, we have thirty units of elderly housing in Gales Ferry, well-managed and run by a director, and it's up to date in, in maintenance. It is overseen by, I'm gonna call it, a board of directors of five members, the housing authority. We are down two members, so if there's anybody who would like to be part of this, please let us know. It involves less than an hour a month. Like I said, it's very well-run and this board of directors, the housing authority, just kind of oversees the operation.
Yes?
Just to add to Counselor Dombrowski's comments, as we were standing there looking out over the school, I had visions of a Guilford-style town green, that I thought looked beautiful there. So, just an idea.
I looked over and I had visions of the Groton, where you can do that track, what is that called? Plains, that's what I had a vision of. So, we all have our visions, it definitely deserves to be, to be talked about. We also need, go ahead.
So, I just wanted to answer the discussion. No, there's lots of visions out there, I'm good. But there were also comments on Facebook about, well, what about Gales Ferry? So, I just want to clarify that we've also applied for the same-sized grant, Main Street Grant for Gales Ferry, to approve that part of town also in the name of economic development. And Senator Austin put in a plug.
Right on the spot.
Turned around and, and the poor governor said, she was. She was reaching for his wallet. Give out money and ask for more.
I should also add, the governor also said, and the mayor called afterwards, we have to spend the money, we can't just let it sit there very long, so we've got to get moving on spending the money. And to that end, I think the process should be that we send it to the permanent building committee, who will most likely recommend that the Leger Center Committee take charge of the project. So, I'm gonna ask that we put that, I think we can put that right on the council agenda next, our next meeting, that we would recommend to send it to, to the permanent building committee, and they will do what they did the last time that we did the wall, et cetera. They will then turn it over to the, to the Leger Center Committee for their oversight. Does that sound like a, we'll vote on at the next meeting, or, yeah, our next meeting. Any other comments from town councillors? I'll entertain a motion for approval of four sets of minutes from June 25th.
Second?
Motion's made, seconded, Roxanne, would you call the call? Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratt?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries, you have your communications list. I just did something very interesting, I've never done, and for those that may follow me because I have my paper agenda.
Don't do that.
I just tried to go like this with my paper.
Doesn't scroll.
Doesn't scroll.
Also won auto-correct your spelling.
Okay, council subcommittee liaison reports, admin, Mr. Light, Counselor Eichelberg.
So, admin met this evening, we had a special meeting. We discussed a number of things that would be on our agenda later, we also discussed, we continued our discussion on basically being a responsible head owner with regard to your neighbor. We're gonna continue that discussion with the animal control officer, as she's available. We moved forward a couple of appointments, we also moved forward the authorization for the Leger Center Committee to continue their excellent work, and that's pretty much it.
Any questions for admin? On dance, I understand that Counselor Saum and Counselor Allen are gonna sub for Counselor France, so would you like to go first?
We met last week and all of our items are on each other's, so.
Okay. Information technology, Counselor Dombrowski.
IT met on July 1st, the one real big item we discussed is that coming out of the last town council meeting, it was discovered, sort of say, that some of the boards and commissions have been having impromptu email messaging back and forth, which kind of violate the FOI requirements. So, we've asked the council to issue a memo and also to re-contribute the town policy guidelines, like, uh, to make our communications to all board of committees, so that.
And that letter is underway.
Yes. So, and also the committee approved the use of the openhydra.com.
Fine, thank you.
So that.
So we can start promoting that.
Soon as Regina gets the URL.
Okay, good. Any questions for IT? Landry, it's Counselor Dombrowski.
Landry's also met on July 1st. One year, Pete Gardner had come to the committee and made a comment to how he felt that he brought evidence through some of the minutes of the IWWC, how residents who are not developers are treated differently than developers in the left division. So, Lynn Marie Thompson was at the meeting, I inquired her comments, and she expressed that we write something, inviting both the committee for their review and to answer them, and just looking through their current regulations, they had also stated by laws, our state statutes, doesn't allow the commission to waive regulations in that they have in there, parts of their regulations, just because you're a citizen and not a developer. So, just something to remind them that they need to be consistent amongst all the applicants, regardless of who they are. We also move forward, which is on the council agenda on Terry Court for tonight. And also review the ordinance establishing citation by trilic weapons, we've envisioned under that, and it's going back to IWWC for comment.
Okay, so we won't be on acting when that this evening?
Well, we do have it on the agenda to discuss the prior quarters. And that's my report.
Any questions for Landry? Liaison reports, start on my right, any liaison reports on my left?
The AdHoc Committee did meet, unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but they did move forward some other stuff, and we will be meeting again next week as a special meeting to continue on.
The mayor and I attended our monthly meeting with the superintendent and the Board of Education Chair. We discussed primarily my letter, which addressed the concern about the Freedom of Information Act in a previous meeting or two that they held. They have decided to, they did respond to my letter and have decided to bring in their attorney to discuss freedom of information, and that meeting is to be scheduled for July 30th, if any councillors are interested in attending. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Chair and Goodavis. I, I mentioned, I've mentioned for the past couple of meetings, the interaction I've had with several towns concerning a regional ACO facility. I will be meeting with those three towns next Thursday to discuss the facility, there's a lot of background going on, background work going on on that. There are some towns, specifically Waterford, that are very much taking the lead on this project. But again, I'm there to listen, to see what, you know, the possibilities are for Leger and to see how that might benefit us. But it's interesting that there are other discussions going on, the council may have noticed some correspondence from the COG, where they were looking at shared code enforcement personnel. And there are several towns that are looking to share wetlands officers, zoning officers, simply because they can't sustain a full-time person, and so each of them, and there's about five or six towns that have submitted. And so each of them, and there's about five or six towns that have submitted how many hours they would be. For instance, the town of Spray is looking for a zoning officer for eight hours a month. So, you know, plus maybe one meeting. So, you know, there are... The point, the point they're trying to make is, obviously, Ledgerd is not necessarily right now looking to be part of that, but it's showing that, you know, towns are definitely looking at every aspect of their operation, and I trust that we're doing everything we can to do that as well. Health insurance, we had a very, very difficult year as far as health insurance costs go, but fortunately, the last few months really turned things around somewhat, to the point where we ended the year, the fiscal year, with $990 in our, in an account that at one point was about three or four million dollars in terms of a reserve account. So now, next year, and one of the reasons the budget went up is not just to pay for next year's claims, but to start to replenish the, that reserve account. So again, it's something we need to do, but for now, we don't need any transfers, and that was very fortunate. The seat board has been informed that they have received the final reimbursement from the state for the cleanup for the spill up on Route 12 and Route 2A. You may remember, a few years ago, it was a very significant spill, it was going on for some time. To this day, there's still a dispute about how much diesel fuel was lost in that. But that is, again, we were able, as a community of governments, to get together and to lobby the state to become more involved in the seat operation, with the ultimate goal of taking over and making this a state-run transit district. The Avery Hill Pump Station is, as far as we know, there's some testing that's been done, we're waiting for the results of that testing, and we're hoping very shortly to be able to get that online. That's probably gonna be more like the end of the month, the way they had predicted. And that would really signal the end, you know, there's no infrastructure that needs to go on within that community, because it's using all of the piping that's there from the well, the well that's there right now, so it should be a matter of turning some valves and getting those people online. So that, that's going to be a great conclusion to this project. There was some discussion at the Finance Committee meeting about advanced approval of grants. I've relayed that concern to my staff, and I believe that what we're going to recommend, or I'm gonna recommend, and I think they're already on board with this, is that during our budget season, as we identify other things, that we also identify grants that maybe apply for annually, and make sure those are all on board, and maybe even come up with something like a standing grant waiver list, where we can say, yes, that, that grant is something we've applied for before, we know how it works, and we know what the obligations of the town would be, and, and make sure that that works that way. I will, I will have a little bit more to say when you do take on that other item, which is the grant receivable. WPCA surplus buildings and wells, we know that we've been talking about getting rid of some of these buildings, some of them are very small, some of them are very large, and it was reminded, and here's where it's great to have a wealth of knowledge at the Town Hall and history there, that when that one building was destroyed by fire, there was $150,000 that was paid, some of that was used to buy the meters that were damaged, but we were able to find $90,000 in insurance money that's still available, and that should go a long way towards removing those buildings, and, and my personal push is to remove the tower also in the Highlands. And so I think we could go a long way with that, and that would be a great thing, but, you know, we reduce our insurance in the town as far as maintenance, or even empty and abandoned buildings. And finally, I'd like to add, and I'm, again, our appreciation to the governor for his visit yesterday, all those of the councilors that attended, and many of the community that attended for the $500,000 steep grant. Again, I appreciate Senator Austin's comments about Route 12, you know, we're guardedly pessimistic about that. So, you know, again, it shows the power of lobbying, and I think they really went to bat, and it was something that I think you very much appreciated. And, you know, had we received the Main Street grant, you know what the comments on Facebook would have been, right? So, you know, what about us? It's always, you know, it's always about what about me, or me next, my turn. So, we'll see, I mean, we are, we do appreciate the things that are happening in Gales Ferry, my job lot, but I, you know, really there, I, there's, there's a lot that could be done. That's my report. Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, several years back, we had some discussions about possibly hiring a part-time grants writer to effectively just pursue grants. Is that something that might still be a consideration? It seems to me that that kind of a position, if we had the right person, would pay for itself over and again many times.
I agree, that that's come up many times, it's one of those items that usually, and I don't know if it ever did make it to the budget, but it's always one of the first things that's taken away. I wrestle with that myself. I do know of some towns, Spray, you know, Spray's a very small town, but, you know, selectmen in Austin, that is a priority to have that position. You can imagine the sacrifice of a town like Spray. At one point, North Stoneleyton had a part-time person, I'm not sure if they still have that person. I always wrestle with the issue of what you pay the person, and then, you know, and it's hard to prove a negative, but what would you have gotten normally with just your staff? And that's always gonna be the trade-off. Now, true, we do have a history we could look at, you know, would a grant writer, let's look at the steep grant and the Main Street grant, over the past few years, would they have done a better job in writing the grant? I think we were able to get some very good support from the COG in reviewing some of our grant applications, and that helped.
I'm, I'm less concerned about the quality of the grants as maybe the quantity, you know, how many... Because our staff is busy with other things, could a grants writer devoted to that, you know, three or four times as many grants maybe? I don't know.
It's quite possible. I, I see them come across my desk all the time, I typically forward them to the appropriate commissions, to our planner, an EDC person. You're right, it's a good point. Now, you know, what I have thought about, and again, this is a little unusual, is, you know, to hire a person on a contingency basis. I don't know, you know, how you would accomplish that and how you frame it, but, you know, if you sent to a person, you know, you'll get X amount of the grants, you know, X percentage of the grants you bring in, with maybe a stipend, you know, certainly something I think we should, we should take a look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes?
You mentioned you were in conversation with, I'll call the mayors of other towns, about a regional project. Is there one already in existence, or would they have to build one?
Okay, I'm not sure, maybe, maybe you weren't at the last meeting. The situation now is that Waterford and Eastline share a, a facility in Waterford, in the Waterford complex.
Okay.
My understanding is that that is in severe disrepair. They went to the government there and said they needed these things, the government basically said to them, well, you raise the money, and, which they did. And Waterford has money that has been raised that could be used. However, instead of doing that, they, really, it's Eastline, Waterford, and Monville that are, that have been working on this for quite a while now. They invited me to be part of this. They're, they're trying to weigh the balance. This would be a facility at the Carden Facility. It would be built and maintained by the inmates. So, beside the initial capital costs, the operational costs would pretty much be completely borne by the facility. So, and what it would also do is, would obviously relieve some of the pressure on staff, because besides an ACO, which you would have to have, much of the staff issues we have is for the, you know, the feeding, the cleaning, the weekends, type duty. Those type of things, I would think, could be regionalized. You know, with four different towns, you don't necessarily need four people on call for those times. So, it's something we're looking at. I'm going to the meeting, it's, it's the first meeting...
So there is no facility, I guess that was...
There is no facility, this is something that would be constructed new.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor? Yes?
Another question or a comment. Yes, congratulations to us on that grant. It really feels like a huge win for us. It felt good hearing about that, but congratulations to you on that. And, um...
Other people?
Oh, yeah, but you're the first person that came to the line. You're the first person, first I thought, but I heard we got the grant. And last time we met, we talked about this company, CLMP, that comes out to your house and does an energy audit, sustainable energy solutions, we got, well, we had it at my house, and I highly recommend getting this done. Excuse me. These two gentlemen come up to my house, very professional, very clean, they're there for almost their day, and it's $99, and you get their services, they seal off the front of your house, turn the fan on, do a airflow analysis. Long story short, they're gonna save about $900 a year in energy through the LEDs they switched out, and the cracks they sealed, and other recommendations they made. So I highly recommend giving them a call. I don't have the number handy, but you get the CLMP, and it's definitely a great thing to do. All right? And if you do get it done, tell them I sent you. Wait, 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 circle home. Tell them, tell them I sent you. I'll give you a check for $25, now donate that check to Autumn's Fund at All Friends Animal Hospital. That will not be a problem. Thank you.
That's right.
No, that, I, I echo, that's fantastic. It's nice to get a firsthand report of someone.
Still, a little bit of work they did, this is about $900 savings a year. They make your house so tight that, you know, you'll think you light a match and the temperature goes up 30 degrees. And it's out. I don't know what to do.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor. Let's see, old business, finance.
So, Councilor France, chairman of the Finance Committee, is on vacation, but I got a text from him while we're talking here tonight. He says, "We're ready to move on this item." He said, "We did get a letter that the membership of LBS voted on the ambulance, and this has been through all the committees, so we are ready to move on this one." And I'll just give you a short background of the new ambulance, we're replacing an old one, it's 11 years old. There were only two bids received, we did go out to bid, only two bids were received. We had a couple of options, and the option that was selected was to purchase the new ambulance, trade in the old, take that power lift off of it, put it on the new ambulance. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, I am ready to move on this, and I should make the motion.
You should make the motion. Right.
I move to transfer appropriate up to $191,000, $47,000 to account 211-20901-57300, new equipment, from CNR account 211-31000, fund balance for the purchase of the 2014-15 PL custom ambulance. In addition, grant a big waiver to New England Fire Equipment and Apparatus Corporation to purchase the 2014-15 PL custom ambulance.
Second.
Motion's made. Seconded, any further discussion? Roxanne?
Just one quick comment. I had the opportunity to observe the power lift in operation a couple of months ago when my mother was being taken to the, to the hospital, and I remember we voted on that about two years back, and that thing is fantastic. I, I was amazed by that, that was, that was just a wonderful appropriation, so...
Thank you, I have to say that I had the first experience.
Not funny, but...
It was a wonderful experience.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, which you call the rule? Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Next.
I make a motion to remove from the table the motion to adopt the proposed ordinance establishing citation of fine trailer weapons violations contained in the draft dated June 3rd, 2014.
Second.
Discussion?
Just remove it from the table.
No discussion, okay. Roxanne, which you call the rule? Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Next.
I make a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance establishing citation of fine trailer weapons violations contained in the draft dated June 3rd, 2014.
Second.
Discussion?
We brought this back off the table, put it revoked with the intent, my intent is to deny this, this motion, to vote it down. The draft orders, when we're back to land use for review, had substantive changes that would require a new public hearing. The ordinance stands now, the draft ordinance is back with IWWC for comment, so this ordinance, as it was submitted, would not suffice based upon the changes that we made, so I recommend that we defeat this motion.
Okay. Discussion. Roxanne, which you call the rule? Mr. Allen?
No.
Mrs. Davis?
No.
Mr. Dubrowski?
No.
Mr. Eichelberg?
No.
Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mrs. McGrattan?
No.
Mr. Song?
No.
Zero in favor, seven opposed?
We don't get to vote no very often.
Motion's been said, almost said, motion carries. Or, I must say, motion is...
But what do you have? I failed you there.
Motion denied.
Motion failed. At this time, would anybody like to amend the agenda on your new business? Hearing none. Admin?
I'll move to appoint Mrs. Sharon Wodecki, Democrat of 44 Fannie Road, Ledgerd, as an alternate member to the Water Pollution Control Authority, for a three-year term ending April 11th, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Perdue.
Second. Motion's made. Seconded, discussion?
I'd just comment that, having, having left the town council, Mrs. Wodecki is keeping herself busy in other areas of town administration and such, so I'm happy to make this appointment, if it carries.
And she certainly knows as much about WPCA as any.
Absolutely.
So... Roxanne, which you call the rule? Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Finance, item number one. Whoops.
Mine, mine too.
Oh, that's right.
I got one more.
Go ahead.
So I'll move to appoint Mr. Justin DeBrott, on a charade of Five Irons Way, Ledgerd, to the Inland, Wetlands, and Watercourses Commission as an alternate member for a three-year term ending October 31st, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Lipinski.
Second. Discussion.
You know, it's nice to see, when we have vacancies, folks stepping up, and I think, you know, it's just my observation that Ledgerd is in a better spot than it's been in for a long time, with vacancies being filled, so...
Very good.
I, I'd just like to thank Mr. Lipinski for his long service to the town in many ways, in many roles, and also Mr. Perdue, who I forgot to mention, who had to leave the WPCA. So thanks to him both.
Thank you for mentioning that. Roxanne, which you call the rule? Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. No, for finance, item number one.
Motion to approve the following salary scales, one, non-union, part-time, and temporary personal salary scale effective July 1, 2014, as proposed in the draft dated June 25th, 2014, and two, Ledgerd Parks and Recreation Department's 2014 summer paying scale.
Your second?
Second.
Second.
Motion's made. Seconded, discussion?
So, this is the pay scale for the non-union employees of the town, including Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec pay scale has moved very slightly upwards. Basically, the same as when we had the last year. They made a couple of corrections to balance some of the differences between the pay structure.
Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Seven favors, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number two.
Motion to approve salary increases for department head and professional employees as recommended in Mayor's Memo dated July 14, 2014, to be effective July 1, 2014, including the salary plan for fiscal year 2014-2015, and authorize the expenditure of funds to implement these increases.
Second.
Motion's made. Seconded, discussion?
So, the background of this is that the town keeps a salary history of the department heads and professional employees. And the mayor was good enough to send a copy of it. Looking at a 10-year, looking 10 years back, if you will, department heads and professional employees have averaged a 2% pay increase each year. So, in good years and bad, that's, that's a good prudent use of the town's, town's funds. So, I recommend that we...
Any other discussion, or questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Seven favors, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number three.
All right, so I'll pick up on item three. I'd like to make a motion to approve appropriations I've received from revenues generated by Town of Ledger bid number 2014-11, surplus equipment as follows. Up to $5,000 to account 210-401-01-57312, large trucks. Up to $4,779.88 to account 210-401-01-57313, small trucks. Up to $3,033.36 to account 210-401-01-57314, light equipment. Up to $2,477.18 to account 210-401-01-57315, pooled vehicles. And up to $449 to account 208-3030-42041, enrichment programs.
Second.
So, what this is, is the, the town had a sealed bid sale of surplus equipment mid-June, and this is the reallocation of funds to the associated accounts from, from which the items were sold.
Any discussion, or question? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Seven favors, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number four.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Connecticut State Library Historic Preservation Grant as follows. Resolve that John Rodoligo, mayor of Ledger, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality a contract with the Connecticut State Library for a historic documents preservation grant, as contained in the draft dated June 13, 2014.
Second.
Motion's made. Seconded, discussion?
Summary on this is that we are, we are in line to receive a $5,000 grant from the State Library Commission. It does not cost us any money. We, we, we have to put some money in. However, the dollars that are received from deed recordings and recordings by the town clerk, money is set aside in a recurring account for purposes like this. So, the state puts money in, and there's some additional money set aside from our recording fees. And what this is going to allow us to do is continue with a rolling, a rolling rack, I guess, if you will, for the document storage and the clerks in the vault, as well as preservation of some older 1800s, early 1900s birth, death, and marriage certificates.
Any questions, further discussions? Mayor, was this the one you wanted to comment on?
Yes. The concern was that, or there's always been a concern with councils that you get grants approved before you apply for them because most grants have some type of obligation on the town, and you want to make sure that the council agrees to go along with that. This particular one, we did pull a string on it, and we understand that there was a $1,750 additional commitment by the town to do what we want to do. And that money is available. It's in a fund that's really accumulated from the individual miscellaneous dollar payments that we get, which really are mandated to be used for this purpose. So, the money is there. It was not something that we, you know, obligated the town for in terms of money that we did not have. Now, of course, the point could always be made that we obligated the town for money, and the council should know about that because they may have other plans for some of that money. So, again, this is a good example of one that we should identify right at the beginning of the year because we do typically apply for it right away, so we're ready to go this year.
And can I just add one thing to that? And in terms of, when you say the council may have other plans for the money, in this case, there is no other use for the money. It is set aside for a very specific reason, that being document retention and archiving.
Any further discussion, or questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Seven favors, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Land use?
I make a motion to adopt a proposed resolution authorizing the Ledger Town Center Committee to continue the efforts to improve economic development. The Ledger Center has contained in the draft dated July 2, 2014.
Second.
Discussion.
So, effective this month, the Ledger Town Center Committee's, the last resolution was adopted by the council, expires effectively in the committee. The committee does continue, wish to continue their efforts. Of course, now we're receiving the grant yesterday.
Of course.
The committee hadn't even managed to, we've got the notification, we haven't yet. But even before that, they wanted to continue on because once again, as always been described, is that we don't want to put a plan on the shelf that reflects us. The committee wanted to continue to pursue the work, and continue working.
Good timing.
Sure.
Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Seven in favors, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number four.
I make a motion to accept Kerry Corrigan's town road inventory as a public street in accordance with ordinance number 45. An ordinance amending an ordinance regulating the addition of any new street or highway into the highway system of the Town of Ledger.
Second. A little, little history on this one. This was actually, all the paperwork that we normally would expect to see in ordinance 45, as you see, is not here this time. We actually tabled this at land use because of that, but then it was found out later on that this road and all the paperwork that was in the checklist that's supposed to be completed had actually been completed in 2006. And in subsequent staff changes, moving offices around, all of that documentation had been lost. So, this was kind of something that should have been acted on by the council eight years ago.
So, this road has effectively been being treated as a town road?
The road is being treated for a town road for the last eight years without actually being accepted into the inventory. All the paperwork, documentation, all the close-out documentation had actually been completed, but in subsequent, it was lost.
And I, when I saw Kerry Corrigan, I said, boy, that's been around the houses there over eight years old.
So, this was...
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number five. That would be me. What would you like, what would you folks, what would your pleasure be in August? Roxanne, do you, because you know the business coming up from other, do you have a preference? Do you think?
Well, I've been asked for a couple days off in August.
Nice.
Roxanne, what would you?
What about saying this a word?
What would I like?
Yeah.
Uh, let's meet the 1st meeting in August.
Okay. Anybody have issues or want to discuss?
Yes, the 13th.
Yes, meet the 13th and not the...
Not the 27th.
And when is Labor Day?
It's the first, or it's the following Monday.
Okay, so maybe that's not a day.
We're late classed.
Oh.
Yep.
So, wait, so we have two people, wait, which, when will you?
I'll be away on the 13th. I'll be out of town that week.
Okay, and you'll be out of town. Okay, so this isn't looking good.
And I don't, I'm kind of a full target right now yet. I stopped sending emails of when I think I'm not going to be here.
Okay, so we have two, okay, so we're preceding, if we miss the next meeting, is anybody out of town?
That's the 13th.
Correct. No, okay.
So, Fred and I are out on the 13th. Right, we'll be out on the 13th.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And the day after that is the 27th.
I'm sorry, the question I meant is, is anybody out the 20?
The 27th.
Yep.
Okay.
I plan to be here.
Okay, then it's going to be the, we'll have a meeting on the 27th. We'll cancel the meeting on the 13th unless there's something that turns up in a given time.
Okay. So, that's just my consensus.